All right, so we are now at our May 4th, 2021 work session for the city council. We just finished an executive session. So sorry for any confusion that this may have caused anyone. And the first item on our work session is when we're going to review Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations for Changes to the City's Good Neighborhood Policy, which is IP3. And I'm going to ask, oh, hello, Anne.
Hi, Mayor. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council. Jeff, did you have anything to say before? Okay, um, I just have a few slides that I'd like to share with the council before we turn it over to you for discussion. Anne Russett with Neighborhood Development Services. If someone could give me permission to share my screen. Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, this is a discussion on the city's Good Neighbor Program. This item, there was an item related to the Good Neighbor Program that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. And they recommended some changes to the program where they would like to make Good Neighbor Meetings mandatory for certain land development applications. So I have a few slides here to just give you some background on the program. Provide some, an overview on recent discussions that have been held related to the Good Neighbor Program. Outline some pros and cons of changing the program and then outline the commission's recommendation and then turn it over to council for discussion. The Good Neighbor Program was established in 1998. It is a voluntary program that encourages dialogue between developers and the neighborhood prior to applications going before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's an opportunity for the developer to share their project and for the neighbors to ask questions and provide input. Applicants hold the Good Neighbor Meetings. They send out the letters inviting the neighbors to attend the meetings. This is all coordinated through city staff. Generally, property owners within 300 feet are notified. That's the minimum. Often, staff recommends that more neighborhood, more neighbors in the area are invited to these meetings. And neighborhood associations are also notified. There's been some recent discussions on the Good Neighbor Program. The first discussion was held in 2013 where the program was reviewed. And staff and city council recommended keeping the program voluntary. In April of 2019, the program was reviewed again. And staff recommended again to keep the meetings voluntary. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission expressed some interest in mandating Good Neighbor Meetings for rezonings or at land development applications that had larger impact. In August of 2020, the commission discussed the Good Neighbor Meeting, Good Neighbor Program once again. And they wanted to make Good Neighbor Meetings mandatory for some land development applications. And they also had an interest in increasing the notification radius to 500 feet from the 300 feet. And also including renters on the list of those notified. The commission requested that staff review the program once again and provide an updated report, which we did in October of 2020 and presented some recommendations to the commission based on their interests. And these are the recommendations that staff provided and that the commission agreed with. They wanted to require Good Neighbor Meetings for annexations, for project-specific plan amendments and associated rezonings, and project-specific map amendments. The goal was to keep these mandatory only for land development applications that had a larger impact and not require them for more technical reviews like a subdivision. They were interested in increasing the notification radius to 500 feet and again, including renters when possible. And wanted staff to explore ways to increase electronic notification options. So just some summary points I wanted to go over and some pros and cons related to making Good Neighbor Meetings mandatory. If we move forward with a mandatory program, staff wants the policy to be clear and concise and have it only affect those projects that are most impactful. Staff does support some changes to the Good Neighbor Program, but does have some concerns with how it could impact staff time. Also, based on our experience, applicants are generally willing to hold a Good Neighbor meeting if we recommend it. And this is especially true for larger-scale projects. If we move to a mandatory program, we would need input from the development community. There has been no outreach to date to the development community. And to make meetings mandatory, it would require a co-change or at least at a minimum, adopting a new policy. So you can see on the table here some pros and cons. Obviously, the pros, the pro is that more residents would be notified. It would also provide clear guidance and clear expectations for everybody, for the applicants, for the neighbors, and for the Planning and Zoning Commission. In terms of some of the cons, it would be an additional requirement for the development community. It could potentially increase the time associated with the process. It may increase planning staff time associated with administrative tasks like sending out letters. And then related to that, it would increase postage costs. So that concludes my presentation. I'll, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Anne. And I'll open it up to council.
Well, I think the in the memo I have here, there was the Planning and Zoning recommending, commission's recommendations, which were pretty much reflected by what Anne just presented, which I think seemed to be a reasonable approach. The one thing I would, would say is, I'm not clear if the notification of neighborhood associations or perhaps, you know, sometimes it may just be a contact person, but that, that piece I don't see reflected in the clearly reflected in the, in the items that are listed there. And I, I think the contacting of the neighborhood association is, is useful because that's part of the network within a neighborhood in it. You know, sometimes those networks, you know, they, they may have, they have some relationship to the the spatial boundaries defining the notification, but they can extend beyond it and then they're, they're kind of interconnected.
John, when you're referring to the memo in front of you, are you referring to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations from October 2020? There's four points there.
Let's see, it was the memo of November 19th, 2020 from Anne to the to Jeff Ruin.
Okay, yeah. And so near the bottom of that, the October 20, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Yeah, I don't have any problem with those. I think it, hopefully it limits it to the kinds of development that we would already have developers doing Good Neighbor Meetings because they're pretty major kinds of things with the annexations. Though I would agree with John, if we do have through our neighborhood association contacts with the city to be able to add that contact, I think, as you say, that, that can be a grapevine out there, so to speak, that can really be helpful. And then the third one, when it says expand those notified to individual residences, when mailing addresses are easily, easily attainable. I don't know if we can just, we know what the, we know what the addresses are within 500 feet. I mean, we can look at the map and see that, even if we don't have a name for the mailing. I don't know, just to save time and effort on staff's part, can those just be addressed to residents and the address? That way, we don't have to be going to the assessor and trying to find names of people at those particular residences.
Yes, in response to your comments, Susan, I think that seems like it might be the, certainly the most convenient way of doing it. And I don't know what people think about how, how effective it is. I certainly see the mail when it's just to the resident, our residents, but I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure how, if there's any significant difference in terms of the the way that the mail is received.
I wonder, Anne.
I think it probably depends on whether it's in an envelope or whether it's like a folded sheet of paper. If it's a folded sheet of paper and not put in an envelope, then it might be easier to have somebody that, something that really draws their attention to the fact that if they're interested in those sorts of things, that they would be more apt to read it.
Anne, can you throw up the the pros and cons one more time? I know that you had on there increase maybe planning staff's time spent on administrative task. Do you have an, I know that we get a lot of things coming through for P and Z, you know, to a certain degree. Is there certain projects that would not be included in this?
Well, I think, um, in terms of our concern related to staff time, it would mainly be related to rezoning applications that are in the core of the community where the urban fabric is very tight. And there is a lot of multi-use buildings, so the number of letters that get sent out increases quite a bit. So I think, I think that's our concern. The projects that wouldn't be required to have Good Neighbor Meetings are the subdivisions and that type of application. But I think even in those situations, since we're still sending out letters regarding upcoming Planning and Zoning Commission Meetings, we would still increase the radius for notification for those, for those meetings. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
To a certain degree, yes. I, 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 I think I know that staff time will be impacted, you know, on this most certainly. I'm just trying to wrap my head around somewhat, you know, what is the best way? Because we can send a lot of letters and people not, you know, be aware. If one person is aware because they opened it up, that wasn't aware, that's great, it's worth it all. Just trying to wrap my head around like how, what would be the most effective way for this to be done? Are there any other options of electronic, electronic options for notification?
We can work with communications on electronic options. I think the issue is that the only way that we can ensure neighboring property owners and neighboring renters get notified is through a letter. Because we don't have any other contact information besides their address, their mailing address.
Yep, okay.
Oh, Anne, are you anticipating that this will happen quite often? So this is going to be like an every week, every other week, once a month kind of increased staff time? Or do you have any sort of a guess on that?
It would probably be a couple of times a month. I mean, it depends on how many applications we get, but whenever we get a rezoning application or a subdivision application, we send out notifications to neighboring property owners, letting them know that there's an upcoming Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. So it would, it would essentially be for every, every application. And that's separate from the Good Neighbor Meetings. I want to be clear about that. The applicant is in charge of sending out those notices. But staff wants to ensure that if a neighboring property owner got notified of a Good Neighbor Meeting, that we are also notifying them of the upcoming Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. So we want those lists to be the same.
Anne, is there a certain amount of content that the notices have to include? I mean, we keep talking about letters and people opening them, but can it be something that's on a postcard with like an, you know, basically automated-generated list based on the location if it just says resident?
Yeah, we, we could look at doing a postcard. We typically send out letters, but we could probably condense the information into a, a postcard.
I think that's an excellent idea, Laura, and I think that might be easier for staff then. You just have the, the road number and then apartment 2A, apartment 3A, resident and a little postcard would catch their attention. So I think that's an excellent idea and might help save time and, and costs. But I'm also in favor of the increase in the radius to 500 feet. I thought that was a good suggestion. Because it seemed, I seem to recall over the last couple of years that there have been some times where residents slightly outside of that 300 foot said, I wish I would have known about that. So I think the 500 might capture some of these folks.
And I would be in support of that as well. Anyone else? Yep, I'm seeing some. Yes. Yes, all right. All right, any other direction that you need from council on this?
I don't think so. I think in terms of next steps, we'll have to prepare something for adoption.
Thank you, Anne. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is the overview of the American Rescue Plan Act. And I'm going to invite our city manager, Jeff Ruin. And you're on mute.
Great way to start the evening here. I trust you can see the, the blue slide on your screen. If you have any trouble following me as I click along, just, just let me know and feel free to jump in at any time. I have about 10 slides to go through with you tonight. And we're going to be focusing on the American Rescue Plan. And you've been hearing a lot of talk about that, really since that stimulus bill was signed into law by President Biden back on March 11th of this year. Specifically, we're going to hone in on the local government relief portion of this bill. So let's start big picture, though. This is a graphic from the National League of Cities that tells you a little bit about how the, how the money is divided here. This reflects just shy of 1.9 trillion. It strips out some of the, the federal to federal dollars and really just focuses on those dollars that are making their way to, to residents in one way, shape, or form. So I like to look at this graph for this, this chart here in kind of three sections. First is, is the big piece to the right there, the 47 and a half percent roughly of the funds are going towards individual relief. That is, you can think of that largely as the, the stimulus checks that, that some people throughout the country received, the $1,400 checks that were much talked about as this bill was being considered. That's kind of that first piece. That's the direct relief. That is the, a good, the, the largest kind of portion of the overall pie, if you will. The second part I like to focus on are all these smaller elements here, starting at the, the top and working its way counterclockwise down here. These are a whole host of different topic areas. You can see we have education workforce, healthcare, business relief, utility assistance, transportation, childcare. I won't go through them all, but a whole host of others. These, these funding streams are getting deployed in various different ways. Some will be going through existing programs that, 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 that the federal government has. It could be formula funding, could be grant programs like CDBG and home that you're used to. But the, the, the way to think about these funds is they're all going to be filtering out a little bit differently. Some, we will receive some funds through some of these programs. For example, I mentioned the home dollars. Those are dollars we expect to receive later this year for homeless assistance programs. That will come out of one of these slices of the pie. Some of these dollars will get funneled through state programs. And, and others, there'll be new programs created. So for example, Health and Human Services at the federal level is creating a new low-income water utility relief program that'll work, that, that, that'll work through each of the 50 states. So we're going to talk about timing a lot tonight and just want to let you know with all these pieces, there's still a lot of question marks on how these funds will get filtered down to our residents. And again, some will get filtered through the city, some will get filtered through states or, or other nonprofit organizations. It's, it's a little bit of wait and see on that. The final piece that I like to focus on is just this bottom 17.6%. And that's the government fiscal relief label at the very bottom of this, of this graph. That's really what we're focusing in on tonight and, and what the public's really keyed in on. So a little bit about that slice of the pie that we're talking about. You have 195.3 billion that will be going to the states and to Washington DC. And then cities and counties each are splitting 65.1 billion, so 65.1 for cities, 65.1 for counties. So as we look at what that means for Iowa and for Johnson County, I've got some notes on this slide. The state of Iowa is expected to receive about 1.3 billion. We fully expect that the allocation of those funds will be headed up by the governor's office, much like the CARES Act. And so just like when the state received CARES Act funds, the, they're going to have to decide how they're going to use those funds. And we saw the state roll out business relief programs, rental relief programs, provide assistance to nonprofits and a whole host of other programs. The state filtered some of that money down to cities and they administered some of that themselves. As we focus in more on the city allocations, that's the notes at the bottom of the slide here. And I want to stress that these are estimated. The legislation itself did not divvy this up between the cities. That's the role of the US Department of Treasury. And so these numbers are estimates that were developed during the legislative process. They are not final numbers and you may see these change, although we think and cities are expecting that they'll be pretty close. Johnson County, the estimate is 29.3 million. Iowa City, 17.3. You can see Coroville and North Liberty are hovering right around 3 million. And the smaller communities in Johnson County will also receive funding as well. So your Solins, your Tiffens, your Hills, they will receive funding as well. It'll be measured in hundreds of thousands of dollars and, and not millions. So a little bit about the timing, the legislation does have some language on when we will receive these funds. There is some practical, a practicality language in there, but it's expected that we will receive the first payment by May 11th, so really a week from today. That marks the 60-day timeframe after President Biden signed this legislation into law. So we'll receive the first portion there, could be up to 50%. And then the second one will come no sooner than 12 months later. So we will not receive all this money at once. We will receive some upfront and then some at least a year from that, from that time. And it's yet to be seen, you know, how that remaining portion will be allocated. I'm sure there'll be some review of how we spent the, any of the initial dollars as, as part of that process. It may be a reimbursement process. We'll, we'll just kind of have to see how that goes. And then the timing deadline is, is that, that we really need to focus on is December 31st, 2024. That's the, that's the time in which the legislation anticipates that all these dollars will be spoken for. We'll, we'll be spending by that period of time. So it's a pretty quick period of time. I know that seems like a long ways out, but when you're talking this large sum of money, it, it will probably take all of that time for many cities and counties to, to spend those dollars.
Yep, you said how much percentage will be received first. Do you know a percentage at least?
We're anticipating 50%, but, but that's, that's not certain yet. And again, there's some language in there that says if, basically if practical, we'll get our first portion within 60 days. So it could be that the federal government determines it's, it's not practical and, and we, you know, have to wait a little bit longer. There's lots of questions on use of funds. So what I did here is I just copied straight out of the, the bill, the, the legislation that is. This is exactly what it says is, you know, what, what the eligible uses are. And I'm just going to focus on those four bullet points and, and read through those and talk through those a little bit. I think it's premature to get into exact uses of funds right now because, as we'll discuss, there are a lot of rules to be written to dictate this. And I think you're all familiar with that with the various federal programs that, that we run. But this will give you a general idea of the intent of the legislation. So that first bullet is to respond to the public health emergency regarding COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. And then it goes on to say, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. A couple of things that I, I pick up here. One is that respond to the public health emergency to us. That implies there'll be some type of COVID impact requirement. You'll have to prove that whatever your funding was impacted by COVID. But then, you know, in that next line, it says, or its negative impacts. And that leads you to believe the contrary, where it might be opened up a little bit because we can all point to the indirect in negative impacts of COVID as well. So there's real interest from cities and really learning what the guidance will be regarding this, this first bullet and how expansive the, the discretion that will be. The second bullet is responding to workers performing essential work and, and allowing us to, to provide premium pay. Now, interesting, as it's written right now, it says premium pay to eligible workers of the metropolitan city. That would be us. Or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers. So as written right now, as I would see this, it sounds like we can pay our own city employees premium pay if that's the choice of council, or we can give grants to other employers to pay their employees. We'll have to see how that guidance is written, but at least at a high level, it, it may be the case where we cannot provide premium pay to, to employees of other employers directly. We'll just kind of have to see how that language is, how those rules are written. The third bullet really talks about government services and really looks at the fiscal impact that COVID has had on government services. So we'll be able to ensure that we can stabilize our own operations and make sure that any losses due to COVID are replenished. And again, we'll have to kind of wait and see what the extent of, of that allowance may be. And finally, the legislation calls out infrastructure investment in the areas of water, sewer, and broadband. And again, a lot to, to, to work through here. We don't know exactly what types of infrastructure within water, sewer, or broadband. But presumably, we could do some work in those areas. You know, sewer is a big question mark with cities right now. Is that sanitary sewer? Is that storm sewer? Does that get into disaster mitigation areas if the storm sewer type of improvements are allowed, are allowed? So again, just trying to show you that we know the general intent. We know that there will be some allowances for certain things, but we just don't know what exactly the fine print's going to be. And, and that's going to impact things, you know, like eligibility. That, that's so crucial as we've learned through this past 12 months. We do have a transfer authority. We can transfer these funds to other organizations, including the state and nonprofit organizations. There's a specific mention of transportation agencies, transportation that obviously is, is something that, that we have in-house here as opposed to a transit district. So So that shouldn't be an issue for us. And then we're explicitly, it's explicit in the legislation that we cannot use the funds to deposit into any pension fund. So that's the text. And again, we would expect that if we're going to receive our first payment within the next week or so, that the, that the rules will come out, at least a preliminary set of rules will come out at that same time. But we have not received those yet to date. So really what I wanted to focus on tonight is I, I really think it's important for you to think about process at this point. I really would discourage you from getting into conversations about specific uses until, until you fully understand those rules. Otherwise, you may be going down a path that proves to be a path that you can't go down after we get those rules. So these are my suggestions. Obviously you all need to have these discussions and move forward. But I think the, the first and most important thing is before you get into talking about uses, develop some guiding principles. What are your values? What do you hope to accomplish with these funds? As you look back in five or 10 years, what do you really want to say about how Iowa City used these funds? And allow that, allow those guiding principles to be your filter for all the requests that you get. You're already receiving requests from the public, you're going to receive more requests. Staff is going to present you with ideas. Nonprofit organizations, business organizations, they're all probably going to have some ideas on, on, on how to spend these. And, and that'll certainly pick up the pace as other cities start to announce their plans too. Where there's going to be a lot of borrowing of ideas probably out there in the municipal world. So establish those upfront and, and stick to them and, and make sure you're using them as a filter. I think it's really important that you coordinate with Johnson County and other, and other cities. And we'll get into that a little bit, but we want to reduce barriers to access to these funds. And it's really important that we're being as efficient as possible. I don't think it's wise to have every municipality in Johnson County have their own rental relief program with different sets of rules and different documentation that's required. It sure would be nice to have one program that we can all get behind. And I realize that may not, that, that may not be possible. Once you get into those discussions, there, there may be some of those values that take you down a different path. But to the extent possible where there is, where there are common goals and, and agreements, we should, we should look to coordinate as much as possible. And one simple way to coordinate is simply by holding some joint public input opportunities. There's a desire that we've heard for, for there to be some public input opportunities for some ideas sharing. I think it would be good to, to hold those as a region if we could. And that would require your, your kind of communication with your elected counterparts. But I would hate to have an organization that's lobbying for use of funds have to go to four or five different public input meetings to express, you know, express their desires. It'd be great to have one that, that all the elected officials or at least representatives of those elected bodies could, could listen into. That would also help the public, you know, you know, at the start of such a meeting to, to introduce some of those rules and, and you know, here's what we know about the use of the funds type of presentation before we get into soliciting those ideas. And then I think you can determine those priorities and begin to spend those and report on them. And that reporting piece is going to be really important. There's going to be a lot of interest in how we're spending these dollars as there should be. And we need to be prepared to, to report on those on a very frequent and detailed basis. So this is not really for discussion tonight. We don't have a whole lot of time left in the work session, but I wanted to provide you some examples of what guiding principles could be. I, I, I think it deserves, you know, your thoughts and reflection. But these are some different things that come to mind when I think about a, a grant source like this. One, we have to leverage as much funding as possible. We always look to do that and avoid duplication with other relief programs. As I think back to that, that kind of pie chart I showed you early on, there's going to be a lot of money coming different ways and they're going to be coming some to the city, some to the state, some to the county. And we really just want to make sure we're, we're not duplicating those sources with, with these discretionary dollars that we have. I think you're going to want to think hard about the municipal operations and what we want to stabilize. You know, we, we did cut infrastructure projects, we did cut some equipment purchases. We've taken revenue losses in several different areas. You'll want to decide what you want to use to, to restore some of the financial stability that we lost through COVID. Things like that could help and, and prevent the need for, for example, for future utility increases. We've taken a hit on, on our water and sewer funds and that hasn't required us to dip into those reserves a little bit more. We're still in good shape, but if you don't replenish that, you're just going to be kind of quicker to that point where you might need a, a water rate or a sewer rate increase in the future. The, the community needs will evolve. We all feel like we're coming out of this pandemic and, and that's a, that's a good sign. But make no mistake, the recovery period is going to be a lot, is going to be several years. And so I think you're just going to want to exercise some patience and, and understand that the community needs are going to evolve in the next couple of years. I think you want to make lasting change. You want to be really thinking about long-term impacts. And I think, you know, my experience was coming out of the 2008 recovery period is that the rush to spend recovery dollars was, was short sighted. There was a real push for governments to spend those dollars as quick as possible. And I give you one example for infrastructure projects. A vast majority of cities took those dollars and they did road resurfacing with them, which, which I'm sure was needed in, in all those communities. But it was the easiest way to get that money pumped out and into the economy. And, you know, at the end of the day, you, you have a road repair that probably lasts 10 or 15 years. Those same roads are probably being redone right about now. And you didn't see that work if we're staying on the infrastructure theme. We didn't, we didn't take the time to really think about what are those bigger projects? What are those really tricky bridge replacement projects or, or other infrastructure projects that, that could have made a lasting difference in the community that are still probably plaguing many of those communities? So we, we want to, we want to really think about long-term. And I used infrastructure there in, in the sense of roads. But think about that as, as your social service funding, your, your household relief. How are we lifting those agencies and that social infrastructure up for, for the long haul as well? Making sure that we are, are doing our best to mitigate racial inequities, that we're trying to also reach our climate goals. So what are those other priorities that, that you've set as a council? That should be having an influence on how we spend these dollars. I encourage you to think about that. One of the trickiest things, and this is probably going to be the hardest thing, I think, for council to deal with, is you're going to get a lot of requests for operational dollars. And these are one-time funds. So we can spin up new services, whether that's a local government or if you're funding new services in the community with say a social service agency. But at the end of the day, those dollars are going to run out. And, and you really need to think about how is this program going to be sustained once that runs out? And, you know, we went through that discussion recently on Sunday Transit Service and we decided to, to do a two-year pilot. So, you know, I'm not saying you can't do those things, but you have to be prepared when those funds run out to have that tough discussion about, is the city going to be willing to fund this locally when these federal dollars run out? I think when it comes to Sunday Transit, we all felt comfortable that yes, we will do that. If, if, if that's what the community reaction, if the community reaction is positive after our pilot, you're going to have to be thinking long and hard about that with all the different requests you, you get. And then certainly compliance and transparency is, is going to be really important. We are going to want to be very clear with the public and with the, with the federal government that we are compliant and, and have public reports demonstrating how we're achieving that. So again, these are, these are some of my thoughts. I'd really encourage you to have some work session time to, to rewrite these as you see fit and really stick through the, stick to those through this process. The final slide here, just want to leave you with these thoughts as, as you begin your discussion on this. Again, coordination with local governments, I think, is really important, can reduce confusion and really ensure efficient use of funds. You know, again, I'll go back to that rental relief program. If that, if something like that comes of this, just think of the administrative overhead that would come from four or five different programs compared to one program. You can really stretch the dollars a lot more by, by finding those areas where we have common goals. There's, there's going to be a delicate balance between getting this dollar, getting these dollars out and meeting emergent needs, and no doubt there are emergent needs. But also you have to balance that with taking your time, developing those relationships with the county, with the other cities, identifying your, your principles. I think you can do that in these next few months while we're still getting clarification on the rules. I don't expect that the rules are going to show up one day and they're going to be, they're going to be 100% clear. There's probably going to be some back and forth and some clarifications. And then we have all the rules for all the other programs that we mentioned at the outset of this presentation. And the last thing is, is just, this is a, this is a historic piece of legislation. And I, I, I think we, we really have to, to be good stewards of these dollars because it can, it can really establish a positive precedent for us. If cities manage these dollars well and we're efficient, we're transparent with them, then it could become a model for, for future federal funding. But if there's all kinds of controversy with how cities and counties are deploying these dollars, you're probably not going to see the federal government eager to do this again. So this is really our time to, to demonstrate to the federal government that we can be effective players in, in not only spending the dollars, but determining how best they're spent in, in our areas. Typically, when we get federal funding, there's little discretion. This is what the funding's for, go figure it out, you know, how, how to administer it cities. This has really given us some, some latitude and discretion. And, and we just need to be cognizant that this could be precedent setting and that would be really good for us if it was. Okay, I appreciate the time tonight. That's a, that's an overview and look forward to working with you as, as you begin the process of determining how to, how to spend these dollars.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'm going to open it up to counselors just to chime in. I do believe that waiting for the rules, which who knows when it'd be? We, we've waited for rules before, but we was hoping that it would come right out and, but I would encourage us waiting for the rules before we start discussing how the funds will be divvied out. But, and, and, but I'll open it up to council.
Yeah, right. My other comment is when you go back to that circle chart that Jeff showed at the very beginning, and then you go to kind of his first thought on our, our thinking as, as we look at this. And one of the things was, you know, not duplicating other services. To have a better understanding of what those other pots of money are that are not coming through us and what the rules are for those pots of money so that we really make sure that we're doing the best we can with the money that we have control over. And as Jeff said, not duplicating other services that are maybe money that's going directly to certain nonprofits or whatever. So it just, it seems to me like there's a lot of information that we're going to want to have, not only about the rules for our money, so to speak, but also the rules for those other pots of money funneled through other organizations and agencies.
I was thinking about this in the context of the historic nature of this, this funding infusion. Like our council, every two years goes through a strategic planning session, right? And we take a lot of care and, and thought over multiple meetings to kind of figure out our, our guiding goals and principles for just a two-year period. And so that, that's kind of sitting with me as we're talking about establishing the, the guiding principles or the values that are really at the core of this is, I think we do need to have some pretty, pretty deep intense discussion to make sure we're on the same page to take advantage of an opportunity that's this, just of such a scope and scale that we may not see again in, you know, a generation or even our lifetimes.
It's my understanding that this may be the first time ever that the federal government has sent big chunks of money directly to cities as opposed to having them all filtered through, through the state. And I, I agree that we, we definitely need guiding principles. And, and I, and, and I also agree that the, the more we can leverage the money and cooperate with other entities within Johnson County, including if we can in joint meetings, the better off we will be, the, the more we can coordinate. I can also see eventually sort of doing things in a phased manner. So there may be things that are really, that are, they're really much more urgent, making people whole. I don't know what that's going to look like. And whereas there, there may also be other things that we want to wait so that we can see what other programs are going to bring. The state is approving money for broadband. This may include money for broadband. If, if Congress passes a big infrastructure bill, that may also include considerable funds for broadband. So I think we'll also, maybe one of our values will be sort of looking at what the priorities are to, to fund upfront and what we need to wait on to see what the scope of other programs looks like.
I think it is really important that we do meet with the other entities such as the county and Correville and North Liberty, those surrounding us, because I think avoiding any overlap in providing funds to a certain group. Because I, I would want to not miss a, a need for a group that's not being met. And I think that's one way we could do that is what, what others are, are helping with and what nonprofits are helping with. Where's the big hole there? Where's the big gaps? And I think that's going to be important for us to, to help that group of folks.
Yeah, I do think that having a joint meeting and inviting others to be a part of that joint meeting for the community could be beneficial just to have kind of what's been asked of our council and even other municipalities here in Johnson County, have that public hear and have that public opportunity for people to come together and, and share their thoughts. I, I will say that it's, it's going to be very important that we look at what the needs are within our community. Now, there could be lots of programs that's happening out there that people have received funds for. But during this time of COVID, what I've learned is that even some of those funds aren't, you know, some of the relief that people have already received hasn't been sufficient. And so I would just caution us to also be open to, you know, even though people have been granted funds, how can we still help those individuals? We do know that there is other, lots of programs out there that, that have been happening. How do you centralize those? How do you know who's doing what? I, I think that that can be a big undertaking. The city of Iowa City will have to determine how we want to utilize our funds. And I think if that's in-house or, or, you know, we divvy it out to a not-for-profit organization or we go combine with communities or municipalities, then I think we can certainly have that discussion moving forward. But it's going to be very important for me just to make sure, just like with our PPP funds that the federal government gave to businesses, that from that lens of how those operations were for those businesses is kind of how I want, personally, the lens for us to utilize the funds that we have access to and grant to people in our community. All right.
So what are our next steps then, just to keep this moving? Should we move, I mean, we're, our next joint entities meeting isn't until July. I think at that meeting, we talked about having sort of committees or delegations. Um I think at that meeting, we talked about having sort of uh committees or delegates who might touch base with other members, other elected officials? Or should we set some work session time to talk about our guiding principles?
Before that, we don't have to wait for July.
I mean, I I've also, I've reached out to a couple of people on the Board of Supervisors. Um they, the county seems to be doing its sort of own internal vetting process right now that they may want to finish before they're, before they're sort of willing to talk together. I know that Supervisor Sullivan had had proposed when we had our last joint entities meeting, basically um setting up a a working group that in, that includes both staff and elected officials from various entities. So um and we also know that it's possible to to call um a it an emergency or extra joint entities meeting if needed, which we've done before.
Well, we certainly did ask the question at the last joint entities meeting if there was interest. And I, the overwhelming, well, some of the responses that I walked away with was people wanted to wait for the rules um and talk internally. And so I think that maybe we could ask our city manager to kind of, you know, feel the temperature of where people are and see if there's any opportunities but for municipalities to come together. But I really believe that Johnson County has to be a part of that. Um personally, I think they should be a part of that. If if they're not a part, then I think we hold our own uh listening opportunities for people. Um I think it should be, i- it could be separate than um our typical meetings, just to allow people to come. And hopefully, we'll have the rules by then. It sounded like the rules could be out within a week. Am I correct?
Could be.
Could be. So so maybe um between now and our next session, uh we can have, we'll probably just have some follow-up um and have this on our agenda again, just to kind of give updates of where there's, where the rules are with the federal government, and then we can start planning. Um if we're, it sounded like people are interested in having public discussion, um public input. So we can start planning that maybe at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's very important, yes, to coordinate with other entity, uh the government entity. And also, it is important to listen to the public, you know, to get the feedback from the public. This is really important.
Um I agree, I agree with what both of you said. I also do believe that 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 we as a council and a city will be best served if we do put together a process that we're, that 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 will be, provide guardrails and and sort of, and basically just the the um, the the framework that we need to be able to eventually evaluate all the proposals.
And I think a big part of that uh is going to be public education, educating the public, uh because they could come to these uh joint meetings with a whole different idea if they, if they haven't been educated on on the process and the rules.
So is it fair to say that moving forward, we'll have this on our work session agenda item? Uh next work session, get, we'll have further in discussions. Um maybe Jeff and I could connect and see how we want to just feel the temperature of other municipalities and come back and report that at the next meeting going forward. Sounds good. All right, great. All right, we are at our next agenda item, which is um, I should know what this is. Clarification of agenda items. We'll move on to info packet discussion. And we'll do April 22nd. Looking at info packet, April 29, and if I'm going too fast, let me know.
I don't have any issues for clarification on the 22nd, but I'm just happy to see some of the things with the CPRB moving forward. That's all.
Okay. April 29th. And then the last item is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
I don't have anything.
Okay, here are none. All right, we will adjourn for now and see you at 6:00 PM and yet another Zoom for today. So we'll sign out of this and see you soon. Bye.